Good evening and welcome to the August 24, 2023 meeting of the Longview City Council. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by mentor and mentee Nick Rucker and Trace Watts. Coordinated by Partners in Prevention, the Aspire Mentoring Program connects youth with caring, trained, adult friend providing guidance, support, and encouragement. The new, the next new mentor orientation is scheduled for Wednesday, September 6, and interested adults are encouraged to become volunteers. So please rise.
First of all, thank you for this honor. Let us pray. Almighty Father, hallowed be thy name. We humbly come before you to ask that your Holy Spirit guide the thoughts and actions of all who come before this council. May he bring wisdom, courage, and humility to all our civil servants. Father, we ask you bring, also bring comfort to those in need and strength and understanding to those struggling in today's world. Now I'd like Trace to offer his prayer.
Dear Lord, I just pray that going through this 2024 year, that all the police officers and the firefighters will be safe doing crime and all of that and saving people. And I just pray that today, that this will be a good day for people. And you just say, amen.
Amen.
I please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Trace, and thank you, Nick, for what you all do and what you're doing. We appreciate you making a difference in the lives around us. That's what we Longviewites like to do. We are now at a citizen comment. I do have a couple of speaker cards. First one is Stacy Kamak. Do you want to speak now or during the CIP discussion? Perfect. Come right ahead, please. And please state your name and your address when you come to the podium. Thank you.
My name is Stacy Kamak. I live at 2715 Patio Street. And I'm here tonight to put a face with an action item that is included in this evening's agenda. This item directly impacts my home and the residence next to me, which is 2717 Patio Street. The item I am referencing is Roman numeral six, action item A on page two of the city council meeting agenda, which is Consider a Resolution Adopting a Five-Year Capital Improvements Program and Allocating Funds for the 2023 and 2024 projects. The portion of this item that impacts my property and home is the 2024 Drainage Improvement Projects, which is to construct improvements to mitigate repetitive home flooding that is threatening structures and/or storm sewer problems. This last storm during the balloon festival, and there was, and we lost electricity, there was 13-plus inches of water in my backyard, which did flood my home. Not only did I have to clean up all the mud and grime, but I lost a lot of personal items in that flood. This is an underdesigned drainage problem that has been recognized by the city since 2017. My hope is that the council can now put a face with the property that this drainage issue is impacting and will act on the items so the drainage issue can be mitigated and resolved.
Thank you very much. And after the CIP presentation, you can give Mr. Bradley and they'll, they can discuss this with you more frequently, okay? Thank you. I also have Jason Jones.
Jason Jones, Five Remnant Place. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, City Council, thanks for the time. I kind of thought about this and, and I thought, you know, as a Christian, I would be remiss if I didn't make a slight correction as well as, you know, share the good news. I've had two groups of people in as many days, or correction, in as many months, come to my door to explain to me how to earn my salvation. Any of you that are Christians know that our salvation was paid for by Jesus Christ. I'm gonna do a quick refresher. John 3:16, "For God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son, that whosoever should believeth in him should not perish but have everlasting life." Most of us learned that as kids. The second part to that, a little bit down, a little further down, John 14:6, where Jesus Christ, before the ascension into heaven, is speaking with Thomas the disciple. He says, "I am the way, the truth, and the life; no man comes unto the Father but by me." If you're familiar with Mark Cahill, he's a Christian author. He played Division One basketball for Auburn University, played with Charles Barkley, as a matter of fact. He wrote a book, he's written several books, but in one of his books entitled, "The One Thing You Can't Do in Heaven," he gives a great analogy. He says, let's say your grandmother buys you a pair of Nike Air Jordan tennis shoes worth 150 bucks, and you're so happy and you're grateful and you're reaching your billfold and you pull out 150 bucks and hand it to her. How's she gonna feel? Well, she's gonna feel offended. Here she is trying to offer you a free gift that's already been paid in full and you're trying to pay for it. You cannot have, you cannot do enough good deeds to earn your way into heaven. I just, you know, I'm, I'm no perfect person and I don't even claim to be a great person, but I'm forgiven. And if there's anyone out there, and I just thought this would be a great format because it goes out, if there's anyone out there that's not saved, I would strongly recommend, actually, I would beg you to consider getting saved. It's as simple as asking the Lord Jesus Christ into your heart, ask for forgiveness of your sins, and you too can be saved and have a gift of eternal salvation that's already paid for on the cross by Jesus Christ. So that's my words. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have no other speaker cards, so we're now to consent agenda. Any items council like pulled off for separate discussion? If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion or a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're now at the action item. Consider a Resolution Adopting the Five-Year CIP Program and Allocating Funds. Mr. Bradley.
Good evening, Mayor Mack and City Council, Pauline Mcfee. I want to present this next year's capital improvement program. And you did tell me to advance my own slides, so thank you. These are based on the policies that we've covered before. You know, we try and set out something in our master plans, in our small area plans, in our master utility plans, and we assign urgencies to these and priorities and rank them accordingly based on available funding. So last year, just a short synopsis, all these projects are underway except for the Lake Le Mans, which, that's a state grant, and that's still in application with TCU, but most of these are proceeding onward. Our first one for next year, this is bridge and culvert locations throughout the city that they've been identified not only by the staff but by the state inspection that Tech Dot does every two years. So we use that to identify projects that we need to do, and we're grateful that ARPA is available to address things like this. All these are throughout the city except for the one at Yarborough. That's a culvert that's just basically failed and needs to be replaced. This is our home flooding project, $5,000, or $500,000 for the two properties at 2715, 2717 Patio. That's also an ARPA-funded project. Additionally, another drainage project, this is in conjunction with the, the state's project for doing the high street overpass over the railroad. The drainage structure is actually underneath this, this structure. And unfortunately, that structure was there before the bridge ever was. So it's an old drainage line. It needs to be moved in order for them to continue with their, their work on that. That's the amount there. It's also by ARPA. Now on to our exhibit center at the Longview Convention Center. They've identified a project that's very important to them, and that was to upgrade the ceiling. And I put that on there, take this ceiling grid out, acoustical tile, open it up, make it look better. Of course, when you do that, you want to address all the other issues there, and that's why we recommend putting all these projects together. They are in the master plan for the convention center, and there's funds available in the Hotel Occupancy Fund to go ahead and do these. And that's replace the roof. That's a 40-year-old roof. We got our monies out of it. Do that ceiling as well as all the up, you know, above the ceiling upgrades, and then we have to do the fire system as well. Now on to parks. This is the Juliana Trail Pedestrian Bridge, approximately 152,000 by the General Fund. Replace a bridge there at Myrtle Street. This is the trail on, or a bridge on Cargill Long, so it'll, it'll look like that. It'll be a pre-engineered, prefabricated bridge that will be placed there for that structure that has outlived its life. On to our sewer projects. We do these every year. It's our upgrades, our rehabilitations, $900,000. That's also funded by ARPA, and that's just sewer problems recognized by staff that are around the, the city due to capacity issues or to just, you know, older deteriorated lines. Now this one would be funded by utility CIP. We want to do a transmission, our water transmission line assessment. We want to go ahead and hire a specialized consultant. They use electromagnetic technology. They go into the line, the line down at Lake Cherokee, that's, that line's been here for 75 years. It should function well, but you know, at 75 years, you want to go in for a checkup, so we want to check that. We've also had problems up here at Fisher Road with our existing domestic line right there. That red beeper's not working, so we want to check that line just to see what's going on, because it's a domestic line that feeds all of West Longview, just to see what, if we've got any issues. That's $200,000 funded by the CIP. At the Sabine River Water Treatment Plant, we have some clarifiers. This is the final clarifier, the one highlighted. It is beyond maintenance, but we can repair it. The outer coating of the concrete wall, that needs a coating and painting, but it's, it's served us well. It's a 50-year-old structure, but we can, we can make it, these repairs using ARPA money and approximately $300,000. This is our line replacement projects, just like the sewer, $900,000. It's ARPA. There's streets all around Longview that need to be upgraded, or water lines on those streets throughout the city. And then also a water main relocation in conjunction with the project that's also listed in several other items for tonight. We're responsible for the upgrade with the Tech Dot agreement, and that's just 273,000 using utility CIP, CIP funds to relocate the water line for Delia. And then additionally, housing also gives us money for CDBG. We have various locations throughout the city. A lot of people say, well, this isn't as much as last year. It's just, you know, a sign of the times that is still money available, and we were proposing to do some critical valve replacement there. This is the summary of all those projects, 5.6 million, roughly 3.6 million of that is the, the ARPA funds, and 1.2 is the Hotel Occupancy Funds. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any question, Mr. Bradley? I have one question, Mr. Bradley. When we were doing the water transmission assessments on the Fisher Road and the Lake Pines, will there be any, any interruption in service during that time, or will it be business as usual?
For the assessment, they actually have to get in the line, but the raw water line has a, has a redundant line, so that would not be affected. They also have an insertion technology, which it may not even have a impact, but we can check that. We are able to take that line down on Fisher, but there's been, there's been problems there with corrosion due to all the pipelines, gas pipelines, and we're just trying to identify that.
If we do something like that, just make sure if we think there might be an interruption, we put something on our website to alert people so they don't just ring our phones off the wall saying, well, I don't have water, you know, because...
We'll have a great communication plan.
Yes, let's just make sure we do. That's perfect. And, and great job, Melton. Thank you so much. Any other questions, comments? Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bradley.
All right, thank you.
We're now considering ordinance amendment in the budget for the city of Longview for reserve funds in the amount of 488,000. Mr. Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Mcfee. Before you, we're gonna have three items that are actually dealing with Delia Drive, so I just kind of want to give a quick recap as far as the project and what is involved before we get started. The three items associated with Delia will be first, the budget amendment, the advanced funding agreement with Tech Dot, and then the third item is the Delia Road right-of-way acquisition item. As you may remember, a few years ago, as HISD was developing their West Elementary Campus, the realignment of Delia Road was identified as a needed project. Throughout the development of that project, that, that was not included in their construction, and from that time, the city started looking at ways to try to develop that project, at least to preserve that right-of-way. One of the conversations that we had fortunately was with potential developers of that property, Garrett Boersma and Jeff Croyer, and, and I'd just like to take this opportunity to say, without them walking alongside this project, we would not be here today, because they have really delayed the development of their project for a number of years to allow us to do this. So just want to say thank you to them. They've been a great partner with the city on this. But through those discussions, this was really our lone opportunity to preserve that right-of-way and try to figure out a way to fund that project. As you may remember, last year in July, the city council approved a resolution authorizing city staff to negotiate and enter into a developer agreement with Mr. Boersma and Mr. Croyer. And at that time, the, the agreement would allow basically the developer through the development of their property to go ahead and realign and build that road, and then over time, the city would reimburse them and pay them back for that. At that time, we also told council that we would look for partners. We'd visit with Tech Dot to see if there was any way that they could participate in the funding, since some of the issues were directly associated with their on-system improvements and the close proximity to that intersection at Page and Loop 21. So during those discussions, Rebecca Wells, who's the Tech Dot Atlanta District Engineer, really stepped up. Her and her staff worked diligently to find and secure funding to get a grant for that. And so that's really why we're here today, is to talk about this project moving forward with the, with the help of the, the two partners that I've mentioned. Without them, this project wouldn't happen, and since the development of the project, actually, the project's expanded with the Tech Dot funding. It's gonna be able to add a turn lane, be able to add sidewalks to it, and, and really make it a huge improvement. So be happy to answer any questions about any three of the items there.
Thank you, Mr. Shirley. I appreciate you making this presentation, and Mr. Boersma and Mr. Croyer, we really do. I think one of them's back there. Thank you so much. We really, really appreciate you guys for, you know, we don't normally get this kind of cooperation with, with the public when we're trying to do something. We're the bad guys that were never really looked at as being helpful, and you guys have been certainly above and beyond what we could have asked for. So thank you both very much. We don't forget things like that. It's very nice to work with you guys. Any questions of Mr. Shirley?
Mr. Shirley, I just want to echo the same thing that Mayor already said. Appreciate all the work that y'all are putting into this. I know this has been a multi-year deal, and with the, what's going on with West Hallsville Elementary, that this is very timely, and so I appreciate your diligence on that. I would, I don't know what the time, but I would like Chief Boone to get up and speak to the project a little bit as well, and how that would help there as well.
Anything that's gonna help with the traffic, alleviating the traffic will be a benefit. For those that don't know, the last, last week, actually, there were two crashes, two days apart. One was actually on the roadway on the loop when the vehicle was attempting to turn around, and then the other one was in, on the parking lot of Hallsville West. So since that time, of course, the speed limit out there right now is 65 miles per hour, and there's not a, a school zone right now. But again, that's, that's for Tech Dot and other entities to, to look at and consider. But on this, the speed limit at 65 miles an hour, obviously, that's, that's pretty quick when you have cars ingress and egress, and but to at least keep people to that, we've had our speed trailer out there, and then we've also added our sign out there as well. And of course, it says, "Slow down at school ahead." So we've got one on the, the north side of the school, and the other one's on the south side of the school to get as much coverage as possible. And then we've actually been out there working the traffic as well. And of course, and you can see there on that one, on the radar lock, 81 and a 65, so obviously some folks just need to, need to slow down. But definitely, any improvements that can be done to the roadway will, will benefit in the long run.
Appreciate that, Chief. I just want to say thank you very much. Your timely response, y'all responded to it quickly, and the feedback that I'm getting has been tremendous as far as y'all's presence being there. So I appreciate that. And then also, and I'll turn over questions after that, but I want to thank Michelle Gamboa as well, Councilwoman Gamboa, for fielding also requests on top of this, too. So appreciate everybody sharing their concerns, and glad that we're moving, hopefully moving forward with this, so thank you.
Very good. Any other questions on this? Mr. Carpenter.
Chief Boone, is Hallsville's Police Department helping? Or are we just covering all the expenses? Not their place?
Hallsville does have their own independent school district police department. Their, their main focus is the, the parking lot and the school itself. Now, they have put a unit out there as well to help slow people down, and then my understanding is the chief there, Chief Miller, has contacted Harrison County as well and asked them to, since that part of the city is in Harrison County, to assist when they can.
Great. And this, Mayor, this is a Dwayne question. Is this thing shovel-ready?
We, we're gonna have to get this put together and that kind of stuff. Yeah, we're getting close, yeah.
I mean, we're not gonna be this time next year still dealing with it, correct?
The construction, it's gonna take a little while. It, it may be next year before it's complete.
Okay, thank you.
But we're gonna get started, yeah.
Okay, there's no other questions. We'll take these one at a time. So you have a motion on action item B.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consider a Resolution Authorizing the City Manager in an Advanced Funding Agreement with Tech Dot. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution approving the acquisition of approximately 22,000, 500 square feet in Harrison County for a right-of-way. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
So motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you all for working on this. I know safety is our primary concern, so let's be diligent on this and get it done as quick as possible. Thank you all, and I thank you all once again, Jeff, and appreciate y'all. We're now at the budget items. Consider a Resolution Specifically City Fees and Charges. Mr. Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Mr. Mcfee, this is an item directly related to the last legislative session, House Bill 3492 amended the local government code to prohibit municipalities from considering cost of construction for infrastructure for review and inspection fees, basically doing away with value-based fee schedules. And the bill does require that cities to consider actual cost on a per hourly and estimated hourly basis. And so we're here to request a fee schedule change in accordance with that legislation that would be, that would go into effect September 1, and that's why this is a little off-schedule and a separate item from our regular fee resolution process. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about the fees and the implementation.
It says require public hearing, which is now open. Any questions, Mr. Shirley? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion or a second? We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Consider a Resolution Establish City Fees and Charges for Fiscal Year 23/24. Mr. Mcfee.
These are the same items we've discussed previously. I don't have any updates to that. The lone exception is that it, the fees that were established in engineering are not a part of this resolution, so that's why there's a separate public hearing on it.
Gotcha. It says require public hearing, which is now open. Any question, Mr. Mcfee? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing on the proposed budget. Ms. Cohen.
Thank you and good evening. This is a required public hearing prior to the adoption of the budget. A motion is not required for this item.
It does require public hearing. Any questions of Ms. Cohen? Public hearing is now open. Public hearing is now closed. There we go. Okay, now we'll consider an ordinance adopting fiscal year 2020, 24, annual operating budget and appropriating said funds. Mr. Mcfee.
I have nothing to add from our previous presentations and discussions.
This does not require public hearing, so any questions to Mr. Mcfee? If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we have a public hearing on the proposed tax rate. Ms. Cohen.
Thank you. This also is a required public hearing on the proposed tax rate. The proposed rate is 56.19 cents. It is a reduction of 1.7 cents from the current tax rate.
This also requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any question, Ms. Cohen? Public hearing is now closed.
That, that does not...
Does this require a motion, Mr. Ray?
No, it does not.
I don't think so. The next one does, F, correct?
The next one is the motion.
Correct. So we'll consider a motion to ratify the property tax revenues increases reflecting fiscal year 2023, 24 budget. Ms. Cohen, once again.
When a budget will raise more revenue from property taxes than the prior year, a separate motion and vote of the governing body is required. This motion confirms that the adoption of this year's budget will raise 7.2 million more in revenue than last year. This item does require a special motion.
Is, any question to Ms. Cohen? Do I have a motion?
I move to ratify the property tax revenue increase reflected in the fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now considering ordinance adopting 23 tax rate and levying said tax rate. Ms. Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. The proposed tax rate is 16.43 cents for debt service, 39.76 cents for operations and maintenance, totaling 56.19 cents. And although this rate is lower than the current year's tax rate, it is above the no-new-revenue rate, and due to the difference there of 16.7%, we are required to have a special motion, and I can answer any questions you might have.
Any question, Ms. Cohen?
Before we have a motion, just an FYI, this requires...
Before we have a motion, just an FYI, this requires a 60% vote of the council, and since we're missing one, it still takes five. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we have to have five of the six here to approve this motion. So is there a motion?
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 56.19 cents per $100 evaluation, which is effectively 16.70% increase in the tax rate.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Here, we're taking a deep breath. Okay. I just want to thank you all once again for this arduous task of this incredibly large city budget, but you all have done an outstanding job once again. I'm pretty sure this is my 18th city budget to do and my very last one. This is the last budget I will ever do, and I can say I'm as proud of this budget as I am of any of them. I don't ever remember lowering a tax rate before. We've never raised a tax rate, other than a voter-approved rate since I've been here, but we were able to lower the tax rate, not because of what we did, it's because of what we did. We budget very well, and when our other revenues come in higher than expected, we're able to lower our tax rate because of our good budgeting. And our team, you all are superb, outstanding. There's no other adjectives I can say other than great job, great job by the council, putting your wants and wishes of your districts before the city manager and his team, and I think they satisfied pretty much every one of those, which is another outstanding accolade for our city manager and the budget team, because every council district was able to receive things that they need, and we still were able to provide for the citizens the services that we're supposed to provide, as well as our public safety, and everybody got a raise, and so everybody should be happy with this budget. And I'm very, very pleased with it, and I thank you all for making this last budget cycle for me very tolerable. So thank you all very much, and I appreciate council's, your decisions in this have played a huge role as well. So thank you all very much. Job well done. And now we will, I will hear my last Longview Economic Development Corporation budget. Mr. Mansfield, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council. And Mayor, yeah, this, I guess as a parting gift, you always give me eight minutes, so I will try to break my record as we move through this. It's my gift to you. Yeah, we're really excited about this year's budget and share in your comments regarding the work that the city has done in presenting their budget, and we are the recipient of that work. And we work hard to continue and partner with the city departments to continue the revenue coming in and expanding opportunities for our citizens. With that said, just to give you a quick year in review, so far for the fiscal year, we've had 46 proposals generated, four-site visits, which is about average that we have, but what's really striking, we have currently 65 open projects. Last year, we had 47, and we are, of those, seven are active. Now, that means that we are actively working with the consultants or working with the company on sites here in Longview. So that's really exciting and keeps us quite busy. Just to give you a summary of the last seven years, these are the projects, both expansions and new projects that we've worked on, and you look at the total capital investment has been over $400 million for Longview and Gregg County. The net to the city over a 10-year period is over $157 million. To the county, over $56 million, and to, these are primarily Longview ISD, which is the largest district, would be over $44 million. So we're excited, we want to keep expanding this list and continue the revenues coming into these areas, into Longview and Gregg County and the school districts. The Type B projects, this is something we're also very proud of. The voters in 1996 gave LECO, a type A corporation, some limited Type B authority, and from that, in the past seven years, we've committed over $10 million to working with the city on these Type B projects, the largest, of course, which includes the trails. George Ritchie expansion, which was huge for everybody involved, including LECO as it bisects our North Business Park. Traffic signals along George Ritchie at Lou Galacy and McCann, the fire station in the North Business Park, which looks amazing, Chief. Had a chance to drive by there the other day. And then also the Police and Fire Training Academy, which we were also excited to participate with. So Keith and I had talked during his tenure as city manager that we want to continue this effort of looking at areas that we can contribute in Type B projects, and Roland and I have had that discussion, and we will continue to look at those here in the coming years, because I think it's important that we do work with the city, since we have that authority, to continue these infrastructure improvements. Going into our budget, this year, these numbers are based, working with Angela, on our projections for sales tax revenue that we receive. You'll see we have an increase in our proposed revenue of almost $8.2 million. Our revenue fund interest is actually going to be higher, but we do cap that at a very conservative rate. And so with that, here's what we intend to spend. Our industry, this is our marketing, this is our travel, meeting with clients, that has increased simply because we do have two new employees in our department. And in fact, one of ours was at a retail show yesterday in Dallas, so we needed to increase that to a little degree. The other, the retail projects and talent, that's our, primarily our Workkeys project, and then projects is the $300,000 that we commit to the city to help offset the cost for the public transit system. So we just see a very slight increase there. Well, GNA, the personnel and benefits, what we have decided to do, LECO since its inception is operated under a 401K, and I think it's really beneficial for LECO as well as the city to move into the state retirement. In order to do that, we have to partner with the city. There is an associated cost with that, and that's really what's reflected in this increase in personnel and benefits, as well as the 5% increase for the team there at LECO. Now, that's excluding me, that's just for the team there. So that's where you're seeing that increase. There is also an increase in Medicare and Social Security due to the fact that we have two more people on the LECO team. So overall, in the subtotal, you see it's only a $90,000 increase. We also did increase professional services. Last year, we committed 130 to construct our new strategic plan. That number will be reduced, so professional services includes our legal and accounting, our yearly audit and our general accounting for paying bills and performance agreement Business park maintenance, we don't anticipate any increase there. Our bond service, that's to pay for the bond debt that we issued to build the trails. This number will actually decrease next year. This number will go down to about 660,000, I believe. Non-fixed assets, office and FFE will go down considerably. That's where, last year, we paid for the fixtures in our new office. And then real property site plan, we look at grading lots, we look at moving gas lines, and then we also use that money to develop site plans as we get projects in from RFIs to show that we can put a building on a certain lot. So we see here in our economic development fund balance, we do have committed for this year $550,000 for scheduled incentive payments for the coming year. That's not including any new ones that we may approve before the end of September. Hopefully, that can happen. But overall, we'll have over 4 million to be used for new economic development projects for the year. In our capital fund budget, you'll see this has decreased significantly as well. Of course, the biggest part of that was the $2 million committed for our new office. We still have $200,000. That's, when we started the project, we needed to upgrade the sidewalks, they are not ADA compliant there, and I asked Roland, since that money, that request would have blown our $2 million budget, can we do it in phases? And he said yes. So we've got a cost estimate, working with Roland and his team. We'll contract or work with the city through an agreement. We've allocated $200,000 to improve those sidewalks, bring them into compliance, and also make the area look better. Other potential capital projects, again, that's if something comes up that we need to, like a fire, or, excuse me, a traffic signal request or something like that, we just like to have a cushion. We still are looking at an outstanding balance on the trails, so we will budget for that to meet our commitment, and, but overall, there will be no necessary transfer in from the general fund into the capital funds budget, and that's it.
Any question, Mr. Mansfield, on the LECO budget?
Move to approve.
There's a motion, is there a second? We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Wayne. Great job. Keep up the good work. Bring in some more projects.
Thank you. Also, if I could, I'd like to introduce our chairman, Ranjit Kadali. I appreciate him coming here and support. He continues the chairmanship, leadership that we've had previously with Natalie and Connor and Peggy, so excited. We've got an outstanding board. They work very well together.
Mr. Mansfield, I do have a real quick question. Have you seen, like, so the projects are up with rates being where they are, it hasn't slowed down demand or any interest in?
No, we continue to get projects in, I mean, two or three times a week.
That's great.
And for a secondary market like us, that's pretty significant.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, a Dallas or a Houston's going to get projects in daily, several projects, but being a secondary market like us, I'm really excited at where we are. I mean, developers call us all the time, and I had one call not long ago that said, "What's going on in Longview?" I have a colleague telling me I need to look at Longview, so, yeah, the word's out there.
Come on down.
Good news.
I'm surprised to hear that, and it's a testament to the work y'all are doing, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. Thanks, Ranjit. Good to see you, buddy. Y'all keep up the good work, Wayne.
Thank you.
We are now to items of community interest. Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you, Mayor. Two quick points here. Number one, if you're traveling, Longview Public, on Highway 80, anywhere west of McCann Road to Gladwater, please be aware there are rocks everywhere. They're taking out numerous windshields every hour. That's part of that resurface that's going on, and it's three different contractors working in three different sections, so once you think you're out of one, you're into the other. Just be aware. Pine Tree's vigil arts department brought home some awards from the Texas Art Association. There were 1,200 districts represented, 68 winners, and Pine Tree was one of them. Homecoming to Pine Tree, Ray, September 8. If you want to attend, you can go as my guest. And last but not least, the Pine Tree Fall Festival on October 28, to be opened to the community, 3 to 8, at the new Pine Tree Stadium. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Snoddy.
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Need to move to approve.
Mr. Pearl's not here. Is there a motion to excuse Mr. Pearl?
She did.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Wade.
Nothing tonight, other than wishing our Longview Lobos good luck as they open up their 23, '24 campaign.
Good deal.
They're in McKinney.
Mr. Newsted.
Yeah, so just to reiterate what Chief Boone already talked about, receiving a lot of concerns about traffic around school areas, so just be mindful. We're all, we all kicked off school now, so every campus is open, so be mindful, be paying attention. Thank you.
Ms. Gamboa.
I'd also like to echo that in regards to traffic. I've been receiving a lot of calls in regards to Spring Hill. Be aware that there is only an attendant on one side of the school, so as you're on George Ritchie Road, please slow down for the little bodies that are going to learn, so please look out both ways, and when a school traffic zone is on, make sure you are paying attention. Next is the comprehensive plan. It closes this month, which means you have a couple days left to give us your input on what you want to see being done on this next update. So I would really encourage every single one of you out here in the audience right now, want to see it. Pull out your phones, scan that QR code. Yeah, thank you, thank you. And send it to all your friends so that we can make sure we get some things done. But other than that, welcome back to school. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight, and thank you to our citizens.
Perfect. Mr. McPhee. Well, fire danger. With hot, dry weather throughout the region, conditions remain favorable for wildfires, and both Gregg and Harrison Counties are under a burn ban. Please use caution during this time. I thought it said something else. It actually does say something else. A bum band.